Call the meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons, the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to order. We ask you to stand. And I would ask Mr. Gordon to lead us in our invocation. And Mr. Lenore, he will lead us in our pledge. Following the invocation, we will pause for a moment of silence, and I'll mention more about that after the prayer. Mr. Gordon.
Our heavenly Father, we thankful this opportunity to come and conduct business for the city of Bastrop. Pray that you would help us and guide us and lead us. We thank you for this city. Thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed upon it. Pray that you will continue to be with those that are in need. Pray that you would be with our men and women in uniforms that are overseas, that you would help the war end soon. And pray for the departments of this city. Pray for our police and our fire, that you would grant them your protection. Lord, we thank you for these things, and we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Would you, as you are in a position of prayer, a longtime employee of the city of Bastrop, Sam Williams of the sewer department, passed in the last couple of weeks, and his funeral was held this past week. He knew the sewer system like the back of his hands, and he was a reference for us. One of the many people who served and served well with our city, and he is to be remembered. Let the record show that this board of all the persons paused in silence in his recognition on this night of this meeting. Would you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. We pray for his memory and his family's well-being. Mr. Lenore, if you will lead us in the pledge.
Attention. Salute. Pledge.
A pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. In the area of announcements, well, let's have a real call first.
District five.
Present.
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 Here.
Thank you. And let the record show that there is a quorum. In the announcements, I first thank the citizens and the employees and volunteers and friends of the city of Bastrop for their participation in the efforts to help us, in their efforts in helping us compete in the Clean a City Contest. The state judging happened on Wednesday morning, and we had large participation, participation, participants that we knew about and participants that we didn't know about, and citizens who made those extra efforts, business people who did those things to tidy up our city and make it presentable. We appreciate all of them and all of you for doing what you needed to do. Staff was led by Mr. McKee, our new public works person, and he organized his crews and coordinated with the various gardens clubs and Main Street and civic and social and private individuals. And Tanya Martin was involved in it, as well as those other folks that I mentioned, and I think we made an impressive showing. We don't know the results. We were in competition with Morgan City and Pineville, Louisiana, and as well as us in our division. So we hope that we'll be hearing something very, very soon. On Wednesday morning, when the judges came, they did take the opportunity to present to us this plaque, which was the indicator of our victory for the district win, which was judged earlier in the spring. The unique thing about winning this district win, District Five, Category G, award is that this is the 50th anniversary. I didn't know until Wednesday that the Clean a City Contest in Louisiana is the oldest contest of its sort in the nation. Everybody else patterns after the Louisiana group. So applaud and thank those folks who helped us win this award. So this is your award. It will be displayed in our display area in the lobby on the north end of the building. So again, thank you, and you to be applauded for your efforts. Many of you, as I said, did things that the public didn't know about, paper didn't print, but you know what you did, and you were all a part of that effort. Secondly, I thank Ms. Olive for representing the city of Bastrop and signing the papers for the closure of the transfers of the deed to sell the Bastrop tank wash that took place yesterday afternoon at 4:30 in Monroe. I was traveling, and Ms. Olive represented the city of Bastrop, and Ms. King will say something about that later on. But thank all of you for your efforts, and the city of Bastrop is alive and well. This city is well thought of throughout the state and throughout the nation, so we ought to be proud. We ought to exemplify that motto, being the city of spirit, pride, and progress, and we need to keep on doing better. But again, thank you for what you've done. Let's move into our agenda with item number four to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. April 10th, regular meeting. You had a chance to peruse and review those minutes. What's your pleasure?
I perused the minutes, and I'd like to make a motion.
I second that.
Ms. Olive moves to approve the minutes of the April 10th, 2008, regular meeting. Mr. Lenore, second her motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item number five, the finance committee report.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept ordinance 08, Part 1, 66, building claim for the month of April.
Mr. Hamlin makes the motion to adopt that ordinance.
I'll second Mr. Hamlin's motion.
Mr. Gordon seconds that motion. If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The ayes have it, so is the order. Ms. King, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes, sir.
Ms. King, if you will give us a brief report from midcourt.
Thank you, and you know, it's always a pleasure to come and just give you, I'm just going to give you a quick report, because Mayor Hawkins has already indicated that we did get the Bastrop tank wash loan closing completed. So Bastrop is out of the landlord business for that building, and I think that that is a great thing, because one of the purposes of our organization, and I know that what the city wants to promote, is that we want to put buildings into private ownership, and we want to encourage entrepreneurship. I just wanted to say a little bit about Tina Brown and her husband, Michael, that they came here from Arizona. And I think that many times we think that people don't want to come here, and we do have people that want to come here, and that they can be very successful. They've been in business for over a year and a half now, that we have to recognize that these things don't happen overnight, that a lot of times it's just staying with it and helping people, helping entrepreneurs go into business. I appreciate everything that the city's done, because the city has been very cooperative in helping this new business. It was a much-needed business. To tell you a little bit about what that company does, they wash out tanker trucks that haul different types of materials that are in liquid form, like many of these things are not extremely, they're not hazardous chemicals, but there are just things that people normally transport, like alum and things that are normally used in water treatment. But these trucks have to be cleaned in between, and they saw, and the Browns saw that there was a need for this business here, that we had the facility available, and that there's an opportunity. And I think that we have many people in our community that see opportunities, and I hope that we'll be able to continue to work with those companies and build these businesses. But we have to recognize that we build them one at a time. So with that, I'd like to say that many people are coming, looking for existing buildings, and I know I have many people that asked me about the Ditto Building, that, and we are, you know, looking at some different ways to market that building. Mayor Hawkins has been very cooperative in providing me with information, and just recently, we got a composite floor plan compiled, because there had been two additions on that building. And I think that we can more effectively market it with this floor plan. So we're going to be moving forward with that, and I see all kinds of positive things for the city. I appreciate everything. Does anyone have any questions about anything else that might be working on, or do you have any knowledge of?
I have a question, Kay. What's the square footage of the Ditto Building? Do you know that?
There is around 150,000 square feet in the Ditto Building. There's 129,000 square feet in the original sewing area that's in that building that's a pretty low height. And there's around 14,000 square feet, I think it's around 14,000 square feet, in the laundry area.
Okay.
So there are many companies looking for buildings, but the ones that are looking for 150,000 square feet are kind of, you know, fewer companies. And one thing that many people ask me about is the length of time that the city's had that, and the city did get that building in 2005, right before the hurricanes, and we had probably a year there that things were pretty stagnant throughout the state. And I think that we're going to see some positive things happening with that building.
Okay. One other question. The traffic light at the Toyota Bastrop account, rather, the last time we met.
I still have not gotten a definitive answer from the state on whether or not there will be a traffic light there, but I believe there is a need for a traffic light there, so I'm going to continue to pursue that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Listfield.
Good evening.
On Tuesday, we met with Larry Hunter at the Fort Pope Training Center for the troops coming back from overseas. To date, they have 349 soldiers in the program. There's another rotation coming in from the Middle East in about four months, and they expect another hundred or so. They're very interested in aviation program, and we're in the logistics part of it right Then on Wednesday, met with LA DOTD airports in Alexandria. We took three of our Bastrop Wings youth with us. They received a warm welcome, got to meet with the state and federal people, FAA. So that was real nice. There's a lot more things that they're going to give us reimbursements for, and I'll get with Sandra on that. I've got a big, long list of that. We're going to get our plane for the youth. I'm going to go ahead and start this. We're going to get our plane for the youth on the 13th, and on the 22nd, tentatively on 22nd, we'd like the council, if their schedules permit, around lunchtime to come out for a presentation to the gentleman that donated the airplane to us. It's about $25,000 he's given us, so we were going to have a little lunch for him. That airplane is Dale Earnhardt Jr.'s airplane. It came in two Saturdays ago on its way to Talladega. He was in Talladega racing, but the plane came through with some of the entourage, and it's a BeachJet Premier Jet, the new light jet. It's the first new light jet landing in Bastrop. So we're getting into turbine business here. Rusty Wallace had come through about a month ago. I gave him a stack of business cards and told him to hand them out to all the race teams. Two weeks later, here comes Earnhardt, so maybe we'll be the pit stop for NASCAR. That'd be kind of nice.
Yeah.
Wow, I'm impressed.
Anyway, the turbine aircraft are coming. We've got to continue to support the activities and businesses at the airport, continue to improve the facility out there. And along with, you know, we talk about getting money, getting money, getting money, but along with that comes the responsibility to maintain the items we get, like the generators and stuff like that we're getting. So just wanted to remind you of that. Questions?
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lawrence, would you come up and help us with item number eight, an ordinance to amend the ordinance relative to junk? Ms. Martin, come and stand with Mr. Lawrence, please. We introduced this last month, as I appreciate it?
Yes, sir. It's my recollection that we did an introduction, and it was placed on tonight's agenda for final approval.
Okay, we haven't heard any, we haven't had any negative hearings on it, and no issues, no discussion about it. So we can be sure this ordinance is going to help us with our issues of abandoned cars and defining what junk is and dealing with blight and all the rest of that?
Yes, sir.
Members of the Board of All the Persons, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt ordinance 08, Part 1, 61.
Mr. Hamlin makes that motion. Ms. Robinson, were you about to second that?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Robinson, second. Is there any discussion? Do you have any questions about the ordinance and what it, how it directs and what it does? It's going to, Ms. Martin, you have any problems in enforcing this? You think this will meet, this will give you the power, you and the police department, the power to cite folks and help us?
Yes, sir.
One of the things, Ms. Martin, that I talked about, because she had an issue Tuesday, Wednesday, with the Cadillac?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We had a car that had been abandoned on the street, and somebody, who brought it up? Mr. McKee brought attention that this car had been parked there in the street for some period of time, and we went through the process, tried to contact folks, and they wouldn't move it. And when, and this is something that we need to do in-house, Mr. Lawrence. Using our normal procedure, we went to pick the car up. And Ms. Martin and I were talking, and I realized, because our mechanics used our trailer and went over to load it up, and when they went over, some individuals, according to Ms. Martin, got on the vehicle with baseball bats, and they dared the folks to move it and all the rest of this. They became extremely hostile. So I think the police officer was called, and then they were allowed to do it. We have a void. If we were moving, if we're moving that car because it's violating a law, the car needs to be ticketed, I would assume, cited in some way. Yes. She has enforcement of ticketing powers, or the police department does. Cadillac, as she described, you know how you see cars on the side of the highway with the big orange sticker on there, because they probably have an expired inspection sticker, license plate, or something like that, say, police make them park it there? So I think we need, our process needs to include a procedure where we cite that car. If the owner isn't around, put a ticket or something on there, letting people, letting the owner or somebody know that it's been active. I don't want us to go out, our people to go out to pick up a vehicle anymore without a police escort protection, because it's enforcing the law. Right. Does that make sense? Yes. Do you think that's unnecessary?
I do. I was going, I don't know, I didn't know about, specifically about the event, but I was going to ask, where was the vehicle parked exactly? Was it obstructing a roadway?
In the street, right.
I mean, the alternative would be call a tow truck.
Right.
And let them tow it off.
Rather than us picking it up.
That's the alternative. I mean, that's what happens in private parking lots and businesses and other places. You can call the tow truck, and they will come and pick it up and tow it.
Who initiates that call?
The property owner.
Well, the city was doing it because they were violating one of our ordinances by blocking the right of way. We initiated.
In that case, the city has just as much right to initiate it as a private property owner does, because it's the public right of way that's being obstructed.
Okay. What we need to do is script the procedure. And probably, I don't know, does, if a tow truck goes to get it, does an officer need to go with that tow truck driver, or only if the tow truck driver calls and asks for assistance? Because he or she might run into the same situation.
If we're asking, if it's one of our representatives that's asking them to go, I would say send an officer, you know, each time.
Okay. We also need to establish our procedure for picking up cars that fall under this junk thing. Are we going to clear property? And I know there is a procedure, you notify property owners and do all that, but we need to be sure that if this comes to court, that there is a structured protocol that has been followed. Yes. Acceptable to the court, I think, to make things happen. So I want us to put the pieces of it. We got the ordinances in place. I think we have our procedure that we're going to go by to do it, but we need to be sure that we do all those legal things to complete the circle, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense what I'm saying, Board of All the Persons? Yes, sir. Okay. Okay. All right. Did we pass that? Did I complete that motion?
I had a motion and a second. I don't know if you all vote.
If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you say no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
We're down to item number nine, resolution ordering calling a special election to be held in city of Bastrop, state Louisiana, authorizing the renewal of sales tax and taxes therein, making application to the state bond commission, and rescinding a prior motion. Last month, we adopted a resolution allowing us to call for an election for two upcoming sales tax expirations. And in the process of getting them approved by the bond commission, there was a technical error found in a document involving the dates. The election is scheduled for July 16th, but in order to have our paperwork correct, we need to rescind the resolution that we adopted and passed last month and adopt this resolution, putting in place the proper protocol, proper dates and all. So this is a technical resolution correcting something that we've already done, but putting in place so that, again, everything is proper. I'd appreciate a motion. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt resolution 08, 1239. Mr. Gordon makes that motion.
I second that.
Mr. Lenore seconded his motion. Is there any discussion? If you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you say no. The ayes have it. Item number 10 is discussion of sidewalk signs in the historic district. You had a packet on that item clarifying and establishing a protocol and procedures. Mr. Larry James is here to make a presentation if there are any questions. I think this is creating a consistent and structured procedure for signage displayed in the historic district. I think, Mr. James, they're pretty clear on it, but if you have, I think you brought...
I really don't have a presentation. I'm here to answer questions. This is just the agenda.
Tell us about your display.
This is an example of an acceptable sidewalk sign. And I wrote that ordinance, so if you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer it.
Any questions? I don't have any questions, ma'am.
Everybody else is, that has a business in the merchant, I mean, in the historic district, they're happy with this? They're going, already going by this, aren't they?
Yeah, I think we only had a couple of instances where things were put up that were not acceptable, but I think we wrote the ordinance to almost accept what was going on, except large vinyl banners. That's what we're trying to eliminate. There are already people that have several of this type of sign. The farmer's market has got some sidewalk signs that are all acceptable. I don't expect any backlash from this ordinance. It's really just a point of clarification.
Was there inclusion in the, inclusion in the creation of this?
You know, I was not in on that, but when we had our historic meeting, we got the input from everyone who interfaced with the merchants. And that was discussed, and then this was created from that inter, that interaction with them.
That's good, then. Okay, members?
I make a motion that we accept this presentation on the historic district.
Okay, what we need to do is adopt this, adopt... It doesn't have a resolution or... We don't have a resolution?
No.
It's just a discussion.
So what do we need to do?
Mr. Lawrence, can somebody give him a copy of that item, that packet item? We need you to see this. And the discussion is, this is a, it was a discussion and a proposal that we adopt this, this is a suggested protocol and description for signage in the historic district.
I have one question for Mr. James while he's reading that. The historic district, how far, what's the parameters, other than right downtown and going east and west, north and south?
Thank you for that question. I believe, and this is from memory, I haven't looked at that in three or four years, it goes past what we call the old junior high and encompasses that. I don't know how far north it goes.
It goes to Cypress, Cypress at the old Stevenson Chevrolet.
Yeah.
Probably goes to the block right there at churches.
Uh huh. Yeah.
Yeah, around, all the way around.
And then near the farmer's market, I guess.
Okay.
Right.
That's about as, that's the, basically, it's around the square, the exception being the junior high.
Okay. When, do those people that are on, like, churches or across, so they're aware that they're in the historic district, and they...
Where Shorty's Barber Shop is?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, those people are in the historic district. Churches, chicken is not.
Is not, right, okay.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, so we need to do an ordinance or an addition.
There's a recommendation to adopt all of this.
Help me, help me with something. The historic district has a commission, a board, or what?
It has, yes.
It's an entity in itself?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have ordinances, so this is an amendment to that ordinance.
To that ordinance. Have you guys adopted that yet? Has the district adopted that yet?
Yes, we have, we have accepted this.
I think the enforcement mechanism requires that probably this body adopt it as well.
But it needs to be in our ordinance form?
Right.
Okay. And it's not in our ordinance form at this time, so we need to hold, does it have penalties?
I didn't see a penalty provision.
There are no penalties.
In it at all.
Okay, how's it enforced?
What I saw is, based on the fact that these are portable signs, I take it that these are freestanding signs.
Like one behind you, right behind you?
Yep, behind. Do we have any right now? Anybody?
Yeah, people are using them around the square now.
That do not conform to...
No, everyone's in compliance right now.
If there's not a penalty mechanism that's already in place, the way that you would enforce it is with a lawsuit, the same way you would enforce a restriction on a deed or subdivision restriction. I mean, that's, that's, that's the best answer I can give you right now about an enforcement mechanism on this for someone who does not comply.
And I'm going probably beyond the intentions of this discussion, but should there be enforcement mechanism into the stipulations of the historic district? Should there be some enforcement mechanism to be sure that folks conform?
What we did in the historic district, I'm not the president, Steve Young can ask me if he can. We've created some sign requirements, and there's, how many pages of requirements? Probably a dozen, 15 pages of requirements. What we really want to do is take this.
I understand.
And add that to that. So any enforcement, I think, would go to that document.
Okay.
As it stands, which is being enforced now through our officer.
There is a...
Thank you.
Save him.
I haven't dealt with that in a while, and I can't remember what it is, but there is a penalty, phase two of that ordinance.
Okay. And my reason for asking, and you know why I'm asking if there's a penalty, because if a penalty is introduced... Because if a penalty is introduced, it's gonna have to lay over.
That's right.
That's, that was, I asked all that to get to where, that point, so since we don't have an ordinance tonight, we need to draft an ordinance. Oh, well? Will this be a part of our ordinance, ordinances, or will it be a part of theirs?
It will be a part of our ordinance.
The historic district.
So we would be approving them adopting this ordinance, or what?
I think all- I think all of the above. It is, it is theirs, but it is as much-
Yeah.
Yours as it is the commission.
I have a question. Before, when there was a discussion on some of the merchants not conforming to what they wanted, it was brought to our, I think we had to settle it, didn't we?
Yes.
So would it be any different for that? If you already, if you are-
Ultimately, it's gonna end up back here if there's a dispute.
And, and where I'm going with this is when this is in the form that it becomes a part of theirs or ours, if there's a penalty, we can't do anything with it tonight but introduce it?
Right. If there's a penalty, that is the intent, for there to be a penalty. Especially a penalty that operates in a, as a fine or something like that, that's exactly right.
And, and there is a penalty, there are penalties attached to the document?
A fine penalty for it.
Even though we can't, we don't have the document in front of us tonight, can we introduce this and have the, the document formulated for adoption for-
I'll tell you what, we can introduce this-
That's my, that's my point.
We've understood that we're gonna do an amendment, and so we can satisfy the introduction requirements tonight.
That's where I'm going.
Yeah.
That's, that's what, that's what all that privilege was all about then.
Yes, sir.
This is being introduced tonight, y'all.
Okay, I have a question.
Ms. Allen?
Thank you. What's the first step, if someone does not comply? Do you find them on the first round, or do you just ask them to comply with it? Or, and I heard you mentioned lawsuits, Mr. Lawrence, so what would be the steps in getting a person to comply with the regulation?
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't-
I don't have that.
Yeah, I don't have everything in front of me to delineate the steps, but there are steps, and we can provide that to you.
Well, Ms. Martin, your normal protocol is that you, you or someone go and talk to them first?
Yes, give them notice, they have five days to comply, and if not-
Then-
I think it's like a hundred dollars a day, and each day being a separate violation.
So the protocol is that, that the code enforcement officer would, would discuss with them first? And let them know that they're in violation, and should they not respond, then the next stuff happens? So there is, there is a procedure in place. Okay.
Other thing I would ask, Mr. Mayor, is that if, if this is gonna come up for final adoption at the next meeting, we can state now a five forty-five P.M.
Public hearing.
Public hearing period that immediately precedes the next regular council meeting, because it has to be the regular council meeting.
Let it be so.
Mayor Hawkins.
Mr. Gordon.
Just as a request, could, could I request that once a draft copy of that ordinance is, is drawn up, that, that we could get a copy of it before the, before the council meeting? Before our, our next regular packet comes out?
Yes.
All right then.
In other words, you want it as soon as possible, not a date before the next meeting?
So that we can review it.
Do we have any copies of the, their requirements? Have we ever been given a copy, so we could have them and know, be familiar with them?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. James, but quite some time ago, some years ago, back when the, that was a comprehensive-
Yeah.
Ordinance that was adopted.
When we adopted the whole historic district stuff.
So such a document does exist?
Well, that was before my time.
Since it's been some period of time, let us staff find all that information and re-disseminate it to our, all the persons, so that they can have that information. Mr. James, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let the record show that we did introduce this ordinance as it relates to the sidewalk signs. Are there any liquor license applications from the police department? Okay. We gotta expand, don't we, Jessica? Is there any other business to be brought before this mayor and board of all the persons? Is there, I need a motion to expand the agenda first.
I'll make a motion to expand this agenda.
Mr. Gordon does.
I second.
Ms. Robinson seconds his motion, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, you say no. Okay. We have a request from a property owner to close or abandon a right-of-way on property that belongs to this property owned, to this, to two property owners on East Madison. He has, the City of Barstrop would determine whether or not this right-of-way is necessary, is needed, and if this document, this document would, would declare that, if you look at the one of the whereas at the bottom, where the City of Barstrop no longer desires to retain an interest and describe right-of-way. One of the, one of the questions that has come up, and we need to investigate this before we adopt this ordinance, is to whether or not the property that this right-of-way led to will be able to be accessed if this right-of-way is abandoned. So we need to do some research before we adopt this. The, the person who requested it is not here, so we, we can't answer that. I'm not sure how time-sensitive this adoption is, and if it is something that we might need to reconvene on, once we get an answer to the question, we'll, I might have to call you back in for a specific purpose. But this property is on the Maruz Road, and there is some property which is internal to it, and we're not sure, based on our knowledge, as to whether that property can be accessed if this is closed. I remember this, this issue, this property coming before us before, and I just don't recall what the answer was, so rather than do something that might have a negative impact on other properties, and I'm not sure if the property owner who's doing this owns the property that's internal. So my request is you have the ordinance, but let us do our research and then come back to you. Okay? Staff, it seems like, Mr. McKee, am I forgetting something? Okay, Ms. Goldman? Okay. How many of you have seen the fountain?
It's looking good.
You have seen it?
Mm-hmm.
No baptizing in it? Don't throw coins in it, 'cause you might mess up the mechanism.
That's right.
And, Mr. McKee? We're gonna call it the Willie McKee Memorial Fountain.
Well, the fountain is still a work in progress.
Okay.
You, you may have noticed if you pass by at night, the lights aren't burning. They are lit up, but, but midweek, next week, they, they will also be lit up. But the fountain is clean and clear and running. Ms. Goldman, may I ask a question? Are we gonna talk about, and discuss any annexations tonight, or we're gonna wait till later?
We, we have a request, is this the one out west?
Yes, sir.
And we're gonna wait and get the parameters of the property and all that, we need to submit that to Mr. Lawrence. I need to know for sure what the property is that's being annexed, and I think, and nobody's here from permits, do you know if a supermit was applied for? A tap, okay, okay. But we need some more data, and that, we've made that, that known, that the person needs to bring in the material in official letter, so, before we go further on that. Okay, is there any citizen would like to make a comment to this mayor and board of all the persons? Sir, if you'll come forward and speak to, give us your name and address, and you may speak to us. Glad to see you, sir.
My name is Rob Matthews, and I live on five twelve Limerick, that's the dead end.
Five twelve Limerick?
Right, that's the dead end, where Quincy used to live down on the end.
Okay.
And I got a problem, because we passed the ordinance a while back, where these people with these vacant lots, if they didn't keep them up, that the city would come in and put it on the tax. Now, I got a house right in the middle of this. On my left-hand side, if a vacant lot with all kind of junk on it, on my right-hand side, that's the house that I bought, and I bought it like in April last year, and they gave me, maybe a month, they sent me a thing, I had fifteen days to tear it down, which I tore it down cleaning up. The next lot over, it got grass this tall, and it was safe to have it and a help had it. I got some pictures here, I wanna show y'all, and you can see. It's better for you to see than I can tell you. So I'm gonna pass these around, and I'll try to explain them as I give it to you. Okay, this first picture here, that's my house, and that's the backup.
Beautiful flowers, I like those.
Mm-hmm.
He does a good job on flowers, if you're a landscaper.
Can you hear my house, and this lot is on, if you come in and own it, that's what all the junk, they tore that house down about a year and a half, and they had to deal with it and things like that.
Isn't that the street that, uh-
That's relentless, right there.
Can you live on, pretty, pretty, Quincy lived on?
Yeah. Now, that's a picture of, I think, you can make sure. Yeah, on the back of my house, and this, on the same house on that slab with all that junk and stuff. And this is a picture of that, now, this here, there's a lot of cross-streets, and they threw it down about a year and a half. Grass, trees, snakes, rats, and everything that's around. Been up here forever, and pictures going on record. Thing that I know something can be done about this. I understand that, you know, you had to clean the city thing, but you also have to realize that we live in a neighborhood, and you don't want all that nest around your place. When you spending tons of money to keep your place, you got grass, snakes, rats, and everything else running around. So, and I know something can be done about this. Because I've been up here forever, time, talked to several people, all, all I get is promises. And you know, you get tired of getting promises and don't get nothing done. And you know, I know something can be done about this situation.
Okay. Your address is five twelve, and the, the-
Right.
These addresses is before, they like five oh eight, five oh six or something?
Well, okay, the first one would be five ten, I'll be five twelve, five fourteen.
Past you.
Right. You can't miss it.
Okay. Ms. Martin, could you make record of these, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matthews, would you come back to our next council meeting and, and let us be able to give you a report? If you'll come back to the council meeting on July the ninth, is it, June, not June, twelve? I gotta count, I'm sorry.
You know, you know the owners?
June twelve.
June twelve, if you'll come back to that council meeting and let us be prepared to make a report to you at that time. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hamlin? Mr. Lenore, I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, I know the-
Okay, if, if, rather than put it on, if you'll give it to Ms. Martin. Ms. Martin? Okay, if you'll speak to him. Uh, Mr. Hamlin and Ms. Robinson, since we're talking about garbage, do you, do y'all wanna give a report on your, on your participation with the police jury and the garbage committee?
Mr. Hamlin, would you like to go?
No, sir, no, ma'am, my ear to the lady.
Thank you. As I said at the police jury meeting, I reluctantly agreed-
Sidebars, please, thank you.
I reluctantly agreed to a year's extension on the garbage, because we, the time constraints. We either had to accept that or possibly not have any garbage pickup at all, until we could get a new contract. So what we're going to do, and I don't know how much more will be involved, but it has been a very good experience, as far as I'm concerned, with the city and the parish working together for a change. And we are going to investigate more companies and what they can do for us and what we can do for them with the garbage. And if anybody in your district has a problem, they have promised that if we call, and you can call the police jury office, and they will give you a direct number to waste management in Monroe, not in Mississippi, and discuss anything that might be going on that we don't know about. But it, it's, we addressed every possibility that we could think of, and there's still some issues that we are trying to work out.
I, I, you know, I appreciate, and I think the jury is trying to, with the capacity that they have, to address it, but I wish that justice, we have a contract with Veolia Water, and when a citizen calls us with an issue, we don't have that citizen contract, Veolia, we deal with them ourselves. I wish that the police jury would take the responsibility, when a complaint comes into them, that they deal directly with waste management, rather than have that citizen do it, because citizens are frustrated enough as it is. And I know that might be their protocol, but I, I don't know how responsive waste management is gonna be to a citizen who has no real authority or oversight with them versus the contracting body, the police jury who does. You know, we contract, the sewer system is our responsibility. We chose to have a public-private partnership with Veolia Water, and they are responsible to us. So when complaints come into us, rather than us telling a citizen to call Veolia Water, we direct them or issue the work order or do whatever to Veolia, to be sure that it, that it's done, so and as I said, I respect the police jury's right to have their own protocol, but I think citizens would appreciate it, and it would keep the accountability with the police jurors, because after all, and I'm being redundant, that's who is responsible for the garbage collection process.
Well, I'll certainly pass that on to them, because we, we just-
Am I alone in that first now? Don't, you know, don't, but if, if that might be one of those things, like I do, used to do, is get out on a limb, but that might be something that I feel that everybody else might feel comfortable in calling.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think you're, you're alone on that. And, and one other thing, we did talk about? The possibility of making burning permissible at a certain time of the year. In particular, when, when, when we began cleaning up late fall and, and early spring, allowing two or three weeks, and I've forgotten which, which month, I think we may have said something like that, last of February and the early part of March, before the wind start blowing, and hopefully while it's damp. We feel that that might help in getting rid of some of those limbs that people in the city have a problem with, trying to bond up, a, a, as well as these. And I did talk, what I mentioned to, to the, to the fire chief and one of the finance meeting. And it's something we'd like to look at as a possibility for next year.
And thank you for allowing me to sit in, in your place, Mr. Hamlin, I attended one of the meetings on that committee, and and I took on the responsibility of getting, re-establishing connection with International Paper Company. But that, 'cause in preliminary discussions, IP, because they use fuel in their wood field, fiber, they use chips in, as I appreciated, in the, in their, as part of their fueling for their boiler, whatever the process is. We had had a preliminary conversation with them, with the, with the individual there, about them having a site or sites in the City of Barstrop where limbs could be brought and chipped, and then the mill would use them, this would keep them, this would be another source of fuel for their process. So I, I, I committed to making that contact and, and being able to get back with them and let them know how that might possibly work. That still doesn't eliminate the issue that some people have with getting their limbs to a place. It, it helps with finding a place for them to go. The folks who don't have trailers still will have a problem in getting them to that site, to that site. So we'll, we'll keep working on that, and thank you for your input.
Mayor?
Ms. Robinson?
The other thing, this is probably a little too soon to be talking about it, but if anybody has any suggestion on how we can handle this, because everybody has worked really hard trying to- trying to figure out what to do, there is not enough money in the fund or the tax to take care of our future, because even at the year, we got a break in the cost, but it did go up, and they're already scrapping for money, and the only way that we could see that we're gonna be able to have any better garbage pickup is that the price will eventually go up, no matter whether we get another person to come in here and do a wonderful job, it's going to cost, and the tax is not going to be enough. So I, if, if we can come up with some alternative things, the police jury and the city would love to hear it.
Is there any other business?
Let me ask a question, going back to what Mr. Hamlin suggested, the controlled burning, how would that work? Would people just...
We, we need to, we need to first check on, on the permissibility of it, check out all the EPA requirements, restrictions, and prohibitions, and then we would need to have a plan, because, believe me, if we allow burning, the runs from the fire department during that period of time will definitely increase. So we would need to put strategies in place on the part of the fire department. So first, we'd need to see if it's permissible with EPA. Then, if it is permissible, then we need to create a plan as to how we're gonna manage it, because our, our, our alert period would need to go full red, full red at that time, and be ready to respond, uh, 'cause folks, to have attendance at a burn and not manage that burning, and then it gets out of hand. So we would have to do some strategies, but that's, the first thing would be EPA approval. Okay? Another business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to so adjourn.
I second.
A motion to adjourn is not debatable.